All right, Michael, does it look like we have a quorum?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. All right. So the first order of business was, we have a quorum. We'll, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. I know it's being taped, so we'll see how that goes. And then I'll also just record it on here as well, just so we can.
This conference, this conference is no longer being recorded.
See how that works.
This conference will now be recorded.
So thank you and welcome to the April thirteenth of two thousand and twenty Plan Commission Meeting. We don't have a quorum, so we're going to begin the meeting. And the first item of business is to consider the approval of the minutes from the March ninth meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion, Tom Robinson.
Motion by Robinson? Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. And just keep in mind at any time, if you want, you can drop a message in the chat box, the little circle on your screen. Next item is the council representative report. Do we have anything to report out, Phil?
Just two brief things from the March tenth council meeting. Ordinance five of twenty twenty amending zoning classification for sixteen forty East Main Street was approved. And R forty-three of twenty twenty, the conditional use permit request by Maggie Gansner for the group daycare at sixteen forty East Main Street was also approved, and that's it.
Yeah, it looks like they're making good progress on that one already. Next item would be staff report.
This is Rodney. I don't have anything particular to point out. We have a staff review letter in the packet. If there's any questions, I'd be available to answer questions.
Yeah. Hearing none, we'll go to item number five, and that's what we have on the screen. And that's a request by Scott Trull for the site plan to approve and construct the at five forty Business Park Circle. And Scott or Rodney, who wants to start?
This is Rodney. I'll give you an overview of the Business Park North. The Business Park North made a recommend or approved the plans as presented, the revised plan set that I'll show you in a minute. With the addition of some brick veneer along the base of the street facing facade side of the building. So I'll highlight that after Scott Trull is giving you an overview of the project.
I'm gonna have to meet the dog.
That's my dog.
That's all right. Are you ready?
Yep, all good.
Okay, go ahead, Scott. You're, you're up.
Well, I can give, I can give an overview if Scott's not able to connect right now. Onto the printing house facility. Kevin Whitford and his wife Tara are expanding their portion of the building to accommodate their Madison Powder Coat Works Division. Kevin's also on the line, I believe, here, so he can give you more of a detail of, of that. And I'm just going to quickly highlight is on the screen at this point. You'll see that they have now included some additional windows on the addition portion of the facility. On the far west side of the addition, you'll see the larger windows, the size of the windows at that entrance point have been increased. Was to include us about a three foot brick veneer along the base edge of this addition to the point where it recesses back into this portion of the building. That's similar to what's found on the original front of this part of the building. And that they've also looked at trying to create a different color pattern on the new facility. But they have, they were planning to repaint their entire facility, the existing, match the new color scheme. So we found the screen right now is the plan that they're seeking approval of, with the exception of adding the brick veneer along the base, which we'd seek for endorsement from the Plan Commission as well.
The addition is specifically to house automated powder coating paint line for a Stoughton business. It requires about six thousand square foot. And it's for five years and it's phase one of three. I guess that's the real driving behind the thirteen thousand square foot at the moment was just to hopefully be able to company or accommodate the required volume of work of a daily. Or to about ten thousand five hundred square foot of the building in the last four years. Amount of square footage needed is perceived to be needed very shortly. That's about all I got of.
Okay. Thank you for that. It looks like Scott, are you there now?
Mayor, this, Mayor, this is Rodney. If Scott's not available, I can just speak to the color scheme. While the pictures that are shown on the screen are not the exact pattern of the building. darker accent, as it was described, about twenty-five feet off of the corner going north and east off of the west corner is shown here. And then transitioning into a lighter gray for the balance of the facility.
Did any of the commissioners have any initial questions? What are you looking for tonight here, Rodney? We're looking to approve the resolution?
We'd look to match what came out of the Business Park North, it'd be approving the resolution with the addition of the three foot part. And we can spell that out more clearly in the resolution, but the intent was to essentially have the brick veneer on the the new portion of the addition that faces the street, not the, not the indentation part of the addition.
Okay, any of the commissioners in a position to make? Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion on that, or Scott, you want to give it one more try? It looks like you might be on there now. You have, you're on there twice. Looks like Commissioner Barman has signed in, though, and he's muted now. All right, so we have a, since Todd's on the line, Rodney, can you?
Yeah, so the motion will really be to adopt the resolution with the addition of the brick veneer along the base elevation of the street front, just on the addition part. So about a three foot brick veneer.
Okay, and Commissioner Barman, did you have any thoughts or questions about it before we vote on it? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstentions? So that motion carries?
Excellent.
All right, and the next item is a request by Blake George for site plan approval to construct a commercial building at one Blake will be on the line to fill in the blanks.
Just a little, but it seems like we ought to be approving the two sites joined together, seven and eight, I think it was, before we approved the site plan. It doesn't seem to make sense to approve the site plan.
That'd be fine, Mayor.
You mean, do you mean the certified survey map?
Yes.
That's fine. The CSM does need to be approved in order to go forward. So yeah, I could go first.
Okay, so that would be item number seven, would the request to approve the CSM to combine the parcels?
Pretty straightforward request, yes. It's just to combine the two parcels since it's going to be built as one, one development anyhow.
Okay, well, why don't you give us an overview and then somebody will make a motion?
It's combining lots six and seven with the intent to you'll, you'll recognize that lot six had only, only had frontage onto Robie Road. Lot seven had frontage onto Nygaard and Robie, and you'll see that to be kind of important. I guess lot six had a little bit of access onto Robie, but not onto Nygaard. When we look at the site plan, you'll see how this, this combined lot configuration allows access onto Nygaard for the full, for the full site.
I'm gonna make a motion to, to adopt this resolution or the combination of combining the two lots into one to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Anything else to add to that one, Rodney?
No, I think that's pretty straightforward.
Okay. The commissioners have any questions?
Nope, I'll save it for the next portion.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion? And is there anything to add to that part of the conversation, Rodney?
Well, yeah, certainly we can give an overview of the site plan. Maybe, maybe this would be a good point for Blake to give an overview of the project and then I'll.
Sure, yes, I'm here. It's pretty straightforward. It's a retail strip center with, at the moment with two tenants, one larger tenant and then a smaller tenant. There's one specific tenant who we're hoping we had in our offer had told them we'd maintain some confidentiality, but they are retail use, they are permitted use under the current zoning. I've met with Mike Stacy, obviously, on this and Rodney Shields. So the zoning isn't an issue. There's no conditional use being asked for or variance per se. So it's just your standard retail strip center. No, there is no drive up. They do have deliveries, you'll see on the east side of the building. They do do deliveries once a week and maybe twice a week in the Christmas holiday. So the traffic impact is light, relatively speaking to deliveries. And then the smaller tenant probably will receive just standard deliveries through the front door. UPS, things like that. The parking is, meets the city requirements. We've worked extensively with Mike Stacy. I also want to say, you know, we appreciate you rushing us onto the agenda. We certainly were prepared to be on in May as well, so, you know, I appreciate this time and getting us up so quickly. We'd like to start construction, you know, or the owner would like to start construction in mid-May with a completion date or sometime in October or November. So it's pretty straightforward. What you see is what you get. There is a portion of the lot that's being taken by the Department of Transportation. The current ownership group, which is the Adams Family Estate, is dealing with that directly with DOT. But that won't have any significant impact on the property. We've worked, we, we did want access to Robie, specifically the tenant wanted access to Robie. But under Rodney and Mike Stacy's direction and the mayor, you know, they've come up with a design to probably to create better safety on Robie Road and we, there was a large compromise to put the both accesses on Nygaard. And I, and I appreciate that. And other than that, I think it'll be a good addition to the community. We've met with Peter Spieham directly on it. He was okay with it. I met with him, I think it was two Fridays ago in his office. And he's approved it. And there's not much, not much else to say.
Okay, anything you want to add, Rodney, before we open it up for questions?
Sure, I was just going to highlight the fact about in eastbound on Robie would really be moving and accelerating out of that roundabout. So we're really appreciative of having, I believe, both accesses coming off of Nygaard as opposed to having any access from this parcel or this lot off of Robie. So I think it's a safer environment. The truck maneuvering diagrams that work actions on Nygaard, but it'll certainly function without having to back their, their truck in and out into Nygaard. So all the movement can be done onsite to facilitate unloading on the east side of the building here. The landscaping plan that's up on the screen now was provided today. We haven't had a chance to scrub that, but if you'll, if your motion moves forward with approving it, we just have that be one of the conditions of approval, along with a staff review letter, would be to allow staff.
And I thought I heard earlier that all the person Schumacher had a question.
One, there we go, perfect. Were, are both tenants lined up for this building without knowing, I mean, I don't need to know who they are, but are there two tenants lined up for this building?
There's one for sure. There's a, these, the final drafting being done that could be executed shortly. The smaller tenant, there's just not been a lot of effort put forth in marketing until we get approval tonight. You know, we're probably looking at your standard affair, could be a cellular store, could be, of course, depending on what happens with our economy. You know, could be a cost cutters. It could be, but it's not a very, that last unit is not very large. It's just over two thousand feet. And, you know, we're trying to be cognizant of parking impacts, you know, the, the main tenant, you know, the highly doubtful will put a restaurant in there due to the parking impact. But it probably would be, like I said, either something in the line of a cellular store. Maybe something that has to do with the medical, whether it's chiropractic, optical, care salon, but pretty low impact stuff as far as parking. You know, the parking lot just isn't set up for excessive parking. And we just can't go that direction. So we're willing to be, the owner's willing to be patient to get the right fit, I guess is the best answer.
Okay, you know, then with parking lot was the next question on there, do you know what direction that the runoff from that lot will go? Will that go into the storm sewer on Nygaard side, or will that flow into the drainage ditch on fifty-one side?
Part of it goes into the drainage ditch, if you look at the elevations to the left, you know, that's tilted to the left. And then part of it tilts towards the north and then goes out the end of the parking lot and works its way down a drainage well into that storm water. So it's kind of split. But there's a far more detailed elevation of that that has been provided by Royal Oaks Engineering, there it is, by Royal Oaks Engineering.
In their landscaping, do you know, I see that they do have a genko tree in there, you know, that one is if, I certainly hope that one's going to be a male tree, not a female tree.
I'm all for red maples, slippery elms, you know, if there's any tree, if there's a concern about it, we are not married to the types.
Okay, I mean, I like those trees. Those just need to make sure to be a female, otherwise the, the fruit that they drop smells like puke.
Okay, then, for sure, we'll make sure it's a female. That's great advice. Thank you. That's the benefit of these meetings, you learn things you never knew.
Right, they used to have a line of them down, you remember where University Square was on, on University Avenue in Madison?
Yes.
They have a line.
Year.
Yeah, they used to have a line of those. Oh my God, that was horrible.
You know, now that you mention it, it's been almost thirty years since I've been there, but yes, I remember what you're talking about.
Yeah, they took all of those out, thankfully. It was a long way to hold your breath.
I remember what you're talking about. Well, thank God, there's only so many, there's few examples of it, so.
Right, right.
Try not to be the, the new one.
Yeah, just get the female, or female, or I mean, sorry, get the male one. That one's way better. Those are all the questions that I had. Thank you.
All right, and then?
Mayor, this is Todd.
Hey, Todd.
Just a comment that it, you know, I quickly trying to look over the landscape, in general, it looks reasonable, but I'm kind of zooming in on the details at the moment. Being that we just got it. The, the lighting plan that was submitted was not, did not meet the codes.
So this is Rodney. Can build the property line, and that was right along Nygaard Street, and I believe that revised plan is now included in the package.
Okay, thank you.
The landscaping approval by the Rodney or Planning Department.
Who is that?
That's Tom Seltzer.
Okay.
I'm seeing my picture up here, but I guess nobody else is.
All right, any more questions or comments about this proposal?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor with the changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries? Eight, which is a request by Forward Development Group for approval of the Meadows at Kettle Park West Final Platte. There's a couple of different things here. Rodney?
People here, it looks like Dave Jenkins, Dennis Stein Cross, Dan O'Callaghan and Jim Ricker are also included in this conversation. For areas, if you will. The blue area has previously been approved as a final plat. It was called Kettle Park West, the Meadows Edition. So that blue area has already been approved with conditions. The bottom area, the certified survey map, that has also been previously approved with conditions. What's really before you now is the center portion of the Kettle Park West development. The final plat that's before us tonight is called the Meadows at Kettle Park West. It's shown in, in principle in the yellow area on the graphic that's on the screen right now. We'll get into details of the, the approval resolution. The one thing that I wanted to highlight was, based on the number of units that are proposed in this development, overall, it's three hundred and six units, a hundred of which were the senior housing, which were accommodated or built already in a previous phase, but the park. So what's shown on the screen right now is, on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see where the parkland is part of the plat, the area that's, I'm, I'm kind of illustrating right now on the western edge of the plat. What's being proposed is to offset or to accommodate the balance of the parkland that would be necessary to fully accommodate the three hundred and six units. Generally, this area in yellow, just to the west of the plat line, is being proposed as for consideration for the four acres of land that would be necessary to accommodate the additional parkland dedication requirements. Parks and Rec met and kind, and discussed this topic. I think they're generally supportive of this type of approach where the park could ultimately expand westward and not necessarily all be accommodated in this plat area, but recognize the park could be accommodated and grow to the west. It's my understanding the Kettle Park West Group can if the legal aspects of it can be worked out. So those are the, those are the couple of highlights I wanted to just provide. Mayor, you may suggest if somebody from the, the Kettle Park West team would like to chime in or give an overview, that'd probably be appropriate.
Sure, that would be great. And then there's three callers. Represent Forward Development Group.
That would be Mr. O'Callaghan.
Thanks for volunteering me, Dennis.
I'll help out if he gets stuck.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, and then maybe some others from the group here, Dennis or Jim could fill in on if I leave anything out, but just very briefly, I'll say that we appreciate the, the review of this and the preparation of the proposed resolution. Our team has reviewed that and we have no problem with any of the recommended conditions of approval. We think they're all appropriate. And we have been working with staff on the development agreements that go along with the, the plat approval. And we look forward to the council taking those up at their next meeting. But Jim or Dennis, is there anything you feel that at this point we need to, you know, speak to in terms of the, the plans for the plat? Plan Commission has already seen this a number of times over the last, you know, year, year and a half.
I think really the key thing. Actually, outside the area, is there anything that we need to discuss on that? It seems like a unique situation.
So our, our proposal there is to, um, is to dedicate that four acres that lie, uh, just outside. A deed. Um, and I've been working with, uh, your city attorney, Matt Dregney, um, to address the legal questions there. We think that there's a, there's an avenue to do that, to accomplish that. Condition in the resolution is that, um, the development agreement, um, contains sufficient language to address that dedication. Um, and if for any reason that, that dedication can't be accomplished or is delayed, um, that we would do it. Um, until that dedication could be, uh, accomplished.
Okay. Questions or comments from the commissioners?
Hi.
It, it's, but it's Bill. So I, I had a question, just curious, um, the yellow rectangle that we're looking at is, uh, the configuration of it, I guess. Opposed to if it was lying on its side where it would be taking up that whole, you know, piece of green that's just to the west. I'm, I'm just kind of curious if.
This is Rodney. I think I can help speak to that. So Kettle Park West has, um, the ability to acquire the area in yellow. That they're under contract with. That's a different landowner. Um, that, that's not to say that there might not be interest by the city to work to acquire this woodland, if you will, at some other future point to further expand this park area.
Okay. I, I guess I'm more curious about like where the pointer is right now that I can see on that little, that, that remnant of green section there.
It, it, no, I, I'm glad you're asking the question for clarification. This yellow depiction shows about four acres, but what it does is it brings it up to the southern edge of the future street right away. As if the green area was extended farther west as shown by the pointer, at this point, there would be potentially a row of houses lining that edge of the, the park and not have as much public access to that land. So you could, you could have it either way, um, but the, the bright yellow depiction just offers an opportunity to maybe have some more street frontage to the park, to the park area.
Okay. And, but, and the. Or the left of the, the yellow square, that could then potentially be houses.
Larger forty, forty acre track. It, it's not clear exactly how that would develop. Currently it's not even in the city limits. We anticipate it will be at some point. Um, but as that becomes, you know, concept plan is developing and involved. Team Phil.
All right. It looks like, uh, it looks like Dan joined us, um, on the line too. Did you? And I think Rodney described that it's going more north in order to have more access instead of houses being put there. Is that what the?
The way it was, but, um, I don't think it'd have an issue with it going more north to get more access off to that road. Um, but we also talked about having a trail corridor, uh, extending through the property like that's in there, uh, kind of comprehensive with the recreation plan. So if you go, if you go to the, I, I believe it was the west, it's probably west, west and north in a direction in our corp. So we were talking about accepting this land as long as that wasn't the extent of the land in this phase of the development and the trail corridor was preserved.
So this plan preserves it?
Three, that can, if that has residential components in it, it'll have to dedicate parkland. And so that could be incorporated into part of that dedication. This large yellow area is really just to accommodate the current Kettle Park West development of three hundred units in this area. Well, future dedication will have to occur in this phase at some point, and that's when you can configure your trail or your park layout further.
Okay. So yeah, when we were originally, when we were talking about the parkland along Oak Opening Drive, the reason why we liked it like the way it was is so it could extend to the west like it is in that either square.
Mayor.
Uh, go ahead.
If I can, um, but tonight in terms of approving this plat, we're just approving that forty acres will be provided through phase three to accommodate the. Fairly having to decide on the orientation of that parcel, correct?
That's correct. The general is still at a point farther to the west of the current plat line.
Yes. So another couple of questions about what we're approving tonight as part of our role as the commission members. Um, is it, um, within the plans that we provided, which I really appreciated, there was also more details in terms of the transportation circulation? Like on the, um, alleyways and was wondering if we're also supposed to be looking at this, the, you know, the plan that was included in the street trees or for.
Here to illustrate the amount of landscaping that's anticipated as part of this development. Um, the interior private layouts for the alleys, those are part of the homeowner association areas that would have to be, uh, put in place. The street trees.
Okay. Cause, cause there's two areas. One, I, um, in the alleyways where they're providing now the, the, um, teen adjustment where you come down into the parking areas along like Trisal Alley North there that we just scrolled out of. If you go up a little bit higher is from where you were. Well, there, yeah, you'll see the parking area, you. Um, I, it, it was surprising to see that it, we actually have a little jog in the access road to those parking areas between the, the lots, which doesn't bother me at all. It's just something that was new, I think, in this particular plan. Um, over on the further west, there was an area where there's not really roundabout, but there's a little place where you, um, you. Parking areas there. And I was a little on Castle Circle there. Um, I, I was a little curious because that looks to be one way if those were back in angled parking stalls there because it, I think that's the only way you could really accommodate parking in those areas if, if you're driving one way, the way the arrows are pointed.
That's how they're configured. That is correct.
Okay. Is it, do we have other places in Stoughton where we have back in angled parking?
We do not. This would be a new location. This Outlet Five that's shown on the screen. The, um, circle, if you, the, the circle is public, but the interior section is owned and maintained by the homeowners association.
I gotcha. So outside what we're deciding on tonight.
Correct. But, but certainly you're acknowledging that the layout is being, um, something unique, but I, I've seen it used in Pittsburgh and elsewhere successfully.
I, I actually like back in angled parking. I just know it might be a little bit of a learning curve for folks in Stoughton.
We're still trying to figure out roundabouts here.
That, that is correct. So, and I, and I like the amount of street trees. I, I do like to sometimes see them not placed so regularly in terms of every fifty feet or however, I mean, having it be more naturally spaced, particularly with location of driveways and whatnot, but I'm assuming it's just illustrative at this point.
That, that's correct. It's illustrative. Our forester and. Operator to have that improvement plan put in place.
Thank you.
All right. Do any commissioners have any other comments or, um, anybody from Forward want to speak to anything that we missed?
Mayor, this is Rodney. I, I think it'd be, be good before we do that, if I can just highlight a few. Okay, O'Callaghan suggested there, there isn't major objection points, but I just wanted to be able to highlight a couple of points. Um, several of them are familiar language that the committees. One kind of nuance to this one is there is a homeowners association. We met, referenced it, uh, uh, earlier, but it does require homeowners association to take on some maintenance res. And, um, the one point I wanted to quickly highlight is there's ongoing discussion, um, with the town of, with the town of Rutland about the. Showing on the screen here, the segment off, uh, near Stoughton Lumber and back to the northern section of this plat. It's important to highlight that this resolution specifically does. We're, we're in a negotiations phase with the town. Uh, we've, we've extended what we think is a fair and, and good offer to make it those improvements and the city remains committed to try to make those improvements. But this, this approval. Place to make that happen. Um, so I just want to make sure that the commissioners are aware of that and the council will need to be as well. Um, likewise, you'll see on. Will need to be either accommodated by fees or this, I'll, I'll turn. On the first of which would be related to the parkland dedication, um, kind of separately is, is the commission comfortable with? Education requirements, or do you have a strong opinion that we should be taking a fee in lieu of land dedication? Um, I think, I think the proposal to have the land out. The commission, we'd like to know that. Then secondly, one, the, the motion would be related to the resolution that would be approving the plat with conditions. It's a council. I'd certainly like to see that we get the, that we have the land added on to that area. I think. I'd prefer that over a payment in lieu, but i- if, uh, worse comes to worst than the payment in lieu, but I, I wouldn't want to leave that green space out, hanging out there for too long because, you know, the, the scope of the development will probably be over five or seven years or so. So having that green space, I think will be.
Do you have any thoughts, Phil?
Well, you know, my preference would be to have the appropriate amount of park space going along with phase two in phase. And if we can reserve this, the, the piece that's over in or adjacent to phase three for, uh, for future use. Then that's an acceptable option at this point.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I'm just, just to say, I, I agree that I, I would, I would move that. Cars of parkland, um, outside of the current phase two, um, as being our preferred choice.
All right.
If I worded it well enough, sure.
We can figure that out.
I understand the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner. Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
What opposition? Okay. Um, it looks like we have one other issue on here and that's for the final plat is.
Resolution that's in your packet and the one that I highlighted a number of points within. Um, I think it's, it's appropriate. I don't know of any adds or additions that.
All right. Commissioners, any questions or motions or what are you thinking?
I don't have anything. This, we've been looking at the same maps for.
I would move that we recommend that the city council approve the plat with the conditions as identified.
Is there a second for that one?
Sure.
Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. One abstention that motion carries. Um, takes us to future agenda items.
How to get some of our, our zoning code changes before the commissioners in a, in a timely fashion.
Okay. A future agenda.
Soon as possible on that Oak Opening Drive and the town of Rutland discussions. I can report that we've shared back with the town, the. I don't know. I don't know what the status is with them at this point. Okay. I mean, just as soon as, whenever you find out any information about that would be appreciated. Certainly.
Okay. Um, here are no other future agenda items that would.
I'm Robinson seconds.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you, everybody.